On the dot. Okay, it is 5:30 and I will call the Albany School Board. Tuesday, January fourteenth, meeting in order. I guess, let's see, order of business would be approval of the previous minutes of nine ten. Can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I will second. All those in favor of approval of minutes?
Aye.
Okay, so minutes are approved in the previous meeting. Comments, public comments, is that public comments?
Public comments?
It just says comments.
I don't know.
Yeah, public.
Oh, a public, okay. Board member comments, any?
We're just in the negotiations with the case of six contract.
And that is ongoing.
That is ongoing. Okay. I guess that's it for comments, then signing of checks in office, I just did that, so that can go back to
Thank you.
the appropriate Business affairs, recommended twenty twenty-five, twenty-six proposed budget.
Did you guys get copies?
I think it was in the packet. Do you want me to take you a copy?
Yeah, let me just see, I just printed out the
Here, just take this one.
When I was looking at
You know, but that's fine.
Yeah, I've got it on my phone as well.
I can get mine, I have my electronic.
Yeah, I do too.
So this is
Mike, do you want to give an overview of?
Yeah, so there's not a whole lot to your budget, it's mostly tuition. First section is regular tuition, as you can see, it's up pretty significantly, it's about twenty-five percent Increases to elementary tuition, reduction, a slight reduction to middle school, and then increase to high school tuition. And the primary reason for that is the current tuition contract has, uses the Adopted budget from one year and then the actuals from a prior year, and it does an adjustment. So in the past couple of years, there's been excess funds because of, because of grant.
You can pull it out, yeah.
Due to grant funds, Conway has had an excess, so that gets returned proportionally Based on where those excess funds are, whether it's elementary, middle, or high school. So this year, there wasn't as much funds returned because a lot of those grants ended.
And that is the, there's about, what is it, there's a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar difference?
Yeah, three seventy-five.
Three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar difference, and that's all due to grants?
Not all of it, so the, so I mean, obviously Conway's budget goes up a little bit every year. But again, the tuition formula, every year there's, because you're not getting billed In the year that the students are attending, you get, the tuition for next year is already set. So they're using the adopted budget from this year, and then the actuals from last year, and there's adjustments based on Actual enrollment for that year too. So there's just not as many adjustments, mainly the return of funds.
So it looks like elementary tuition has increased.
Hundred sixty-four thousand.
Hundred sixty-four thousand, middle school actually went down?
Yep, twenty-two thousand.
High school is increased, wow.
About one thirty-four.
One thirty-four. Now, what, this elementary share of bond, is that, is that?
Yeah, so it's again part of the tuition contract, so it's based on equalized value, and so that's just gets Allocated between Conway, Eaton, and Albany.
And that is for just, because the senior in the middle school does, do not have a bond?
No, those bonds are paid in full.
Those are paid in full, but the elementary is still ongoing?
Yep.
And how long, how much longer is that?
They, they started, I believe, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen for, for the elementary ones, so
Twenty-year?
They're twenty-year bonds, yeah.
So then those will retire in twenty-six?
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six.
And then the trust funds, same idea, those were set amounts, and they're allocated by equalized value.
Any questions on any of those?
Well, we have one year of hiatus. I mean, I did, just want to check. I don't really have any questions more than
Yeah, I mean, it looks like, I mean, special ed was increased, but, I mean, that's
Yeah, so special ed, there, that's, there's three one-to-one pairs. The ninety thousand covers about two. And, you know, that's based on the needs at the moment, you guys do have a capital reserve fund Right now that currently has About a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars in it. So given the other increases, We're thinking that now may be a good time to utilize that fund, instead of adding another forty-five thousand dollars To the budget, if needed.
We were thinking we should add to that special ed budget, I mean, that's typically what we've done in the past, is add, you know, Not, we actually reduced a little bit of the addition last year, but we still added something. But you're saying, take from the
It's just so hard to predict those special education needs eighteen months in advance. Yeah, so we're budgeting based on what we know we have right now, but a student can move, or a student's needs could change, or whatever, and we'd be Down, or the opposite could happen, and you would be, you know, over expending some lines perhaps, or having to go into the trust. So I think it's a good idea to continue to add to it, but as Mike was saying, you know, we only Budgeted for two positions when we know we currently have three, but we're anticipating there may be some movement there. So feel okay about not putting in for all three, and if
Given that there is a question here.
Access some of the trust fund money.
Yeah.
It's so unpredictable.
It is unpredictable.
To me, we're kind of going, I mean, we had a, we had, this current year we're on, it was a little bit more We're kind of going back a couple of years with, in our budgets, so Our tax rate's pretty, I think it's going to come in pretty similar. So I don't think we should pull from that special education fund In a year when I take our tax rate, it's going to be pretty stable. I'd rather pull from that when we have a
A catastrophic need.
Yeah, when our tax rate is jumping.
I would think that's, that would be
So do you want to add like forty-five thousand dollars back to that? The special ed tuition line? So right now there's ninety thousand dollars in there, it's line twelve.
Yeah.
And Mike, how much of the trust fund say, have in it, did you say, I can't pull up? I don't have internet here.
One sixty-two.
One sixty-two, that's right.
And what has typically been our, can you bring up history of how much we've typically added to that?
The trust.
Yeah. What did we add last year? I know we added something, it wasn't
So last year was fifteen thousand?
Yeah.
Maybe we should stay with that?
I mean, and last year, you spent within, what's, twenty thousand dollars of your full appropriation.
Of the ninety? I mean, of the
So your, your budget for the last fiscal year was one point seven one five? And you spent one point six nine four, so there was
Pretty close.
Yeah, twenty thousand dollars of fund balance.
You guys win the prize.
It's all scientific.
Yeah, good budgeting.
I mean, I guess I would say, let's, I would say, let's keep it at fifteen thousand and not pull from it. You know, I think that would be a prudent thing, just like you said, it's kind of a crap shoot, you never, you never know. But I think we've been kind of lucky, actually, in the last couple of years, because if you look back on history, I think it has gone, it had been more substantial than that. For whatever.
So in that ninety, you were already back the forty-five out of it?
Yeah, so, so for a one-to-one pair, we, we, like a vacant position, we, you basically use like a mid Range with like a single plant, like single insurance, single dental, and that comes in wages and benefits as about forty-five thousand dollars. So we budgeted for two. There, at the moment, there's three identified students, so if you don't want to pull from that fund, Then either it's a little bit of a roll of the dice and see what, you know, if somebody comes in, moves out, you know, Doesn't need the one-to-one anymore, or do you add the forty-five thousand dollars to line twelve to fund?
What we know we need from positions right now.
Well, I think you made a good point, that this, since the tax rate's not going to be going up significantly
Well, that's my
Right, but
That is not set, though.
It's not set, but I think that there's a good chance that it's going to go up.
In the future.
In the future. So let's, I don't say bite the bullet, but let's, I would, I would rather err on the side of caution now than In the future of having to pull, than really have even more of an increase than might, might need.
This is proposed, so this is
Yeah, so I mean, you could always adjust it later, or even up until the town meeting.
Yeah, or we could just add it on the other end, but
Right.
We could add it under, just Whatever's not spent comes back in its own fund, it's not like it's
Right, correct.
So however we want to show it, I guess, if we want to show it on, on line twelve, or we can
It's most accurate on line twelve, I would say.
Or we can show it on twenty, or we can show it on twenty-seven. Then we put it in the reverse reserve fund, we could do it that way.
So the reserve fund would be what you add on the warrant?
Yeah.
Right.
This year, but
This year.
You have, if you needed to access it, you could, and then you could put whatever in there to replenish it.
Yeah, you would have to have the, the second, you would have to do that, though, but
Or next year.
Yeah, or next year. Yeah.
Everything else is pretty close to the same, the only other change is the transportation for special ed student, Which comes in at about thirty-eight thousand. And then an increase for regular transportation, that's based on a contract with Eldridge. And this is the final year of that contract too, so have to look at
Didn't we just do that?
I believe it was three or, three or five?
Yeah, we need to talk to them again. Hey, do they do a good job?
Yeah, I mean, we
He's great to work with.
He's great to work with.
Yep, he is, and I think we've tidied it up a little bit, because now we don't have to go down to, or That other area, so
What's your thought? I'll follow you on that, do we want to, do we want to leave it, or put it back in?
I, I would say put it back in, that would be my vote. I mean, that would be my suggestion. Yeah, okay, let's do that.
Alright, so we're going to add forty-five thousand dollars to
The special education tuition line?
Yeah.
Okay.
And if you could check into, I mean, I don't, I, why, I have that stuck in my head about what that, what I signed, what we signed for that manifest? Yeah, I just, because I don't know where that, is it an out-of-placement? Out-of-district placement?
I'm not sure, I think it was from Portsmouth.
I thought it was a Portsmouth facility.
Okay.
At least that's what I thought, I could be wrong, and I didn't
Was it just recent?
Within the last couple of months, anyway, yeah.
Just wondering if she would have seen you.
And really, the reason why Ann had asked about it, and, because she hadn't seen that before either, so And I had, I did reach out to Pam, but I, I just emailed, I didn't So other than that, I don't see anything else in the
The recommended warrant article?
Yeah, recommended warrant articles.
Yeah, so last year was fifteen thousand, it looked like there was anything in the prior year.
Anything in the prior, for, for the warrant articles?
Oh, sorry, for, yeah, for the, sorry, especially warrant article. Go to the warrant articles.
I just put it in the warrant article.
For?
For the fifteen thousand.
That's a draft copy, we can
That's pretty minimal.
So the first one is your budget article five. Do you have a bottom line number, Mike, with that addition of the forty-five thousand to line twelve?
Yeah, so it increased, so the, the grand total is going to be one million seven ninety-two, six ninety-six. And then thirty-one thousand of that is going to be offset by grants. So the total general fund would be one million seven sixty-one, six ninety-six.
So last year, article six was your tuition piece. This year, is that the special education trust fund?
Six is?
Yeah, six was just, it was a, there was a non-binding, it was almost like a poll type thing
Right, but
For that, but, but this year, we wanted to add, keep the fifteen thousand
For the special education
For the special education trust fund, yeah, so that should be article six.
It's easier to do it a little at a time for us. Because we're kind of transient.
It's smart.
Tim didn't like it, though.
Yeah, Tim didn't like it. But he was
I agree with him.
Yeah, so you didn't put anything into it in twenty
Four.
Or twenty-three?
Yeah.
Let me check twenty-two. You did put it in in twenty-two, you put fifteen thousand.
Okay. Yep. Okay, I don't see anything Else to add to the, any to the warrant articles, you first, so With that said, number six, superintendent's report?
We're actively trying to hire for the HR assistant communications person, that Sharon Quinn's Role at the SAU, right in the front office there, so we begin interviews for that position. We've interviewed for the finance manager position. Still looking for an accountant. Beyond that, that's kind of where we're at, staffing the SAU.
Isn't, or, so the last executive board meeting, didn't there was some talk about The warding of the assistant superintendent position?
Yes, so the assistant superintendent job description was reviewed by the executive committee, and it will go to the full SAU board for approval the next meeting. Very different job than the director of curriculum and instruction, that is up and running now currently, which is great. But beyond that, there's, we're doing a deep dive by request, but it's just good practice with our transportation. Periodically, Gretel will ask the drivers to collect, you know, a range of data points as far as Number of stops, you know, distance between stops, how many kids are getting off and on at each stop, Daily ridership, all of that, but we were asked to provide that for the Commonwealth Logistics Committee. So we're gathering that data right now, so that will be fresh, we can share, share it out with folks, but That's just good information to have periodically, trying to figure out this consolidation, and how it's impacting All of those logistical aspects that we, you know, Put together on a whim quickly, and then have to now assess how it's going, but our ridership is up significantly, I think everywhere. Including Albany, yeah. And again, he's great to work with, or whatever it's worth, really responsive to student needs, and knows those kids, and
And what do you attribute the increase in ridership to?
I think it's generally just more of a pain to pick up your gifts now, Because there's a split between two schools, which, you know, like to get from one to the next. You know, we talked a lot when, when trying to come up with how to consolidate, you know, do we have a staggered start times? That it's less of a window for those buses to get from one location and then to the next? But that's just complicated, as far as, you know, teachers' schedules and all of that.
I think that's a great thing.
But it's working now. It just makes that drop-off pickup window longer, because the length of time It takes to get from one location to the next. But, you know, parents aren't waiting in the pickup line at one spot, and then going to wait up in the pickup line at the other spot, it's more of a flow through. So I would say that has a lot to do with the increased ridership, which is great. Yeah, and we were able to keep the routes the same, so it wasn't like we had one set of buses going to one location, Dropping off, while the other set of buses went to the other location to drop off. So it's been easier for families to put all of the kids on one bus, even though they're going to go to two different stops.
Do you see a difference in ridership between the elementary, junior high, and high school?
Yeah, our elementary ridership is definitely up, like, pre-COVID.
So elementary's up?
Yep, I'm not, I'm not entirely, I'll, I'll have all that tomorrow for the middle and high school, but
I know, you know, that gentleman that does the traffic control in front of You know what, I've seen it over the years, and he's the best that we've had.
I would agree with you.
Well, he's passionate, but he's, there's been a couple of individuals that have attempted that Particular position, and I don't know where they got trained for traffic control, but it was really bad. I mean, it was, I thought there was going to be a disaster there at some point, and I think this guy has, at least he's On top of it, they give him the right equipment, he's got, you know, I think he must have had some kind of traffic training.
I will pass it along, because I think he also takes a whole lot of flak from some people, you know, but he stays positive, and
Yeah, I bet he does.
Well, he lets people out when he wants to.
He's out there cold, you know, but
That's right, he's out there every day.
He's doing a great job, so I appreciate that, I'll pass that on for sure.
Is, is Eldridge happy with what he's doing? I mean, they're looking very new with everybody.
I haven't had conversation, but
You guys are the only ones that are using Eldridge.
Oh, okay, alright.
But there, there is a check in there for, so I'll reach out to him this week, once Ann signs, and let her know that that's available, and I can I can start that conversation.
Madison doesn't use Eldridge?
No, they, their contract has expired in, for this school year, and they went with Butler.
Really?
No, it's great, just tell them we'd like, we'd talk, and, because Tim always talks with them, so he will help out to initiate that. I mean, I can talk to him, because I talk to him
It's like night and day what we had previously, so that's, that is a huge
Yeah, if anybody's texting me at three-thirty or four in the morning, it's him.
Yep, yep, and I'm texting him right after that about call off school or not possible. But one other thing about transportation too, with, with the configuration that I didn't want to forget to mention, is now All elementary students have transportation home from Project Succeed, which is our after-school program. Before, it was just on one site, so now everybody gets shipped home at the end of after-school program.
Shipped home by
By bus.
That was the five o'clock buses leaving after
That's right, yep.
Even from Albany?
Albany, I think
I don't, I don't know.
I don't, I don't, we don't have any after-school buses.
Well, they, they would leave, I know that they would drop at the end of Drake Hill.
I think we drop close by, I don't think it's door-to-door like it is during the day.
Maybe like a one-stop kind of thing?
Yeah, a one-stop thing, we do the same for EUM.
I know we don't have late buses, you know, for Albany students, which we have never had late buses that I am aware of. You know, the five o'clock or four o'clock late bus, whatever it is. Not through Eldridge, we don't, they just have one
Yeah, no, we used to.
Maybe years ago, yeah, but we haven't had any for a long time, and I didn't know how that worked with Project Succeed, or
I can find out, I'm pretty sure there's
They would drop us, like, I know that they would drop at the end of Drake Hill Road, and they would drop at the end of Bald Hill Road, and things like that.
The Conway bus?
Yes.
So Conway is taking our kids from Albany and dropping
That's what I, I mean, I've seen that, so
Similar thing happens in the Freedom late bus transport, some Eaton kids, it's just an agreement they have, Where they just, they drop only at the lake, or the store, or whatever. Just kind of
Yeah.
I'm pretty fond of sharing. So the warrant articles, do we want to vote on them now?
Yeah.
We might as well, we're here.
We're here.
So article five is to see if the school district will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of, and the amended number is One million seven hundred and ninety-two thousand six hundred and ninety-six, with thirty-one thousand offsetting this amount from various grants.
I will make a motion to insert article five into the warrant for those amounts that were just stated.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And the second article that I will write Is to see if the school district will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of fifteen thousand dollars to be placed in the capital reserve fund, special education, Previously established for this purpose.
I will make a motion to adopt that, for, that would be article six.
That will be article six.
Article six for that, fifteen thousand for special ed reserve fund?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's it?
That's it, good, okay.
So your budget hearing is Tuesday, February eleventh At five-thirty. And then your annual meeting is Tuesday, March eleventh At seven.
I'm sorry, can you say, is it Tuesday?
It's right on the line, yeah, so
Oh, it's right there, okay, no, I'm sorry, okay, I don't Okay, so that takes care of our warrant articles.
I'll have to go over if there's any public comment.
Yeah, we had, see, so nothing else for superintendent's report, that's
I don't have anything else, unless there's anything that was specific.
Personnel changes, number seven, any personnel, not on our end.
So you're still, you're advertised again for the Commonwealth School Board?
I did, I think I've done it four times for the vacant seat.
I wonder if we should
Rick Hyland said he'd do it.
He did?
Yeah.
I mean
I think we can't find anybody.
The only, the only thing I could think of was maybe make some kind of notice when people come in to the town hall, that this position's open.
Yeah, we could do it, I could have, I could have Sandy put a sign on.
It's the only captive audience that we have, of Albany residents that are coming in here, so that might be a
We have a, yeah, because Rick knows that, I mean, we're gonna This winter, we'll get into our attendance issues, because I'm going to be gone, so, you know, things like that, so we gotta figure this winter, we'll get into our tenhouse issues because I'm gonna be gone, so, you know, things like that, so we gotta figure out.
Gotta have a form.
So he said he would do it if we couldn't find anybody, so.
Okay.
And he's a selectman, so that would, you know, he knows the routine.
I think if, yeah, maybe potentially uh putting up a notice in the town hall uh at the town hall section.
I'll have, I'll talk with Sandy.
Okay, great.
And I'll talk to Lisa and make sure.
Probably should have done that a while ago, but.
Talk to Lisa and she'll put one up at the select, the selectman's office too.
Great, okay. Uh, any other business? With uh none of that, yeah, let's see. Next meeting, budget hearing, like um, Amy said, Tuesday, February eleventh at uh twenty twenty-five at five-thirty would be the budget hearing, and then uh school district meeting would be Tuesday, March eleventh at seven PM. Twenty-five. I don't see any public, for public comments. Um and any, any non-public session that we need to require? Well, if that's the case, then I will consider a motion for a adjournment.
I may motion.
We'll second that, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye.